Call this evening's meeting in the Planning Commission to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Jamie.
Mrs. Clancy.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mrs. Chopto.
Here.
Mr. Basic.
Here.
Mr. DeCuliac.
All right, we have two sets of minutes to approve. I'll address the October 14th minutes first.
Make a motion to approve minutes from October 14th, 2025, PC 101425.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mrs. Chopto.
Yes.
Mr. Basic.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now the October 28th minutes.
I motion for approval of PC 102825 meeting minutes.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we approve the minutes from October 28th? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mrs. Chopto.
Yes.
Mr. Basic.
Yes.
Motion carries. Any old business. All right, let's get into the new business. First is consideration of the 2026 Planning Commission dates.
Yep, so you should have a printout of the schedule in front of you. Just typical meeting dates, 2nd and 4th Tuesday every month.
I'll give you notice, I will not be at the January 13th.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Motion to approve.
I motion to approve the 2026 Planning Commission dates as presented.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the dates. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mrs. Chopto.
Yes.
Mr. Basic.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, on to number two, please. Zach.
Thank you. This application is PC 25-31. This property is at 4149 Steels Point Drive, which is at the corner of Steels Point and Steels Corner on the northwest corner. This property is just over one acre in Zone C5 for highway service. This is for a conditional use for a cannabis dispensary, site plan approval, and a couple of variances. On the zoning map, just do one point out since it'll be coming up in one of the variances at this property, but's an R1 district to the west of the property. All right, so the site plan includes a 2,400 square foot building, 27 parking spaces, which includes two ADA compliant spaces. Access to the site will be provided off of Steels Point, two-way access towards the north of the property. For building setbacks and parking setbacks does comply with all of those. The building itself will be located about 56 feet from the west property line, which is by the residential, 60 feet from the north. And then from the, there's court lots, there's two front yards. The south end, that'll be 117 feet, and to the east is 77 feet. Parking setbacks complies with that as well, 20 feet along the front, and 25 feet to the rear, 10 feet on the side. So they comply with all the required setbacks. Landscaping plan, which has been approved by the city arborist. This includes 9.3% interior parking lot landscaping, which is almost double of our requirement of 5%. It does include 12 new trees, 103 shrubs. Also includes shrubs along the front of the parking to the south to screen the parking spaces from the street, which is required as well. And then renderings of the building. I can come back to these if you have any questions. They did include a floor plan, so the way it works is there's a check-in lobby when you walk in. Applicant is here, they can probably better describe the operations by check-in, provider ID, get a badge to come in, the sales floor. All the product will be at the back of the building in a secured vault. And just a few more renderings of the inside. And then, so the supplemental regulations for cannabis facilities. So starting with A, this is in line with the state requirement that no facility shall be within one mile of another current or proposed facility, which it complies with. Section B does require a variance, states that a facility shall not be within 1,000 feet measured from parcel line to parcel line in which there is situated a school, place of worship, public library, public playground, a public park, or an opioid treatment facility. This facility is 955 feet from a daycare, which is at 4117 Bridgewater Parkway. Daycares do, they fall under the definition of a school under the state code. So they do need a variance from that. C, D, and E's, no outdoor storage, no outdoor sales, and no drive-through facility, which they comply with. And then section F is that they are also required to be 1,000 feet from a residential district. This property, as I mentioned, is a budding residential district, so that's a zero-foot setback, basically. This is the radius map that was supplied by the applicant, showing where these locations are. Obviously residential to the west. Do want to point out that property is vacant, so the nearest dwelling is the property over, which the dwelling itself is about 600 feet from this property. And then the daycare facility is southeast. It's all around children, which is 955 feet from this property. Do you want to talk about the existing code? So, right now, based on these 1,000-foot buffers, everything in blue is 1,000 feet from residential or schools, parks, playgrounds. So really, under the existing code, the only locations that are compliant with those setbacks are in the northwest corner of the city, which are industrial properties. And we are going through the process of updating our code. We have our third reading at council on December 4th. We'll see how that goes. But that code does propose to change those regulations, so it would limit the number of dispensaries to just one in the city. So if this project is approved and the code is approved, it would just be the only one in the city. Still have to meet the one-mile separation. Drive-through and outdoor storage would be prohibited. And then we would eliminate the 1,000-foot setback from residential and reduce the 1,000-foot setback from the schools, churches, libraries, from 1,000 feet to 500 feet. So under the proposed regulations, the site would comply with those. But I will leave this up for review. Again, this for a conditional use for a dispensary, site plan approval, and variances from the school setback and the residential setback. The applicant has a whole team here, and they have a presentation as well. So happy to take any questions.
Who's going to be presenting? Can you turn that on? Just push the button down at the bottom. And then if you could state your name and address.
Yes, I'm Chris Niekamp, an attorney with Buckingham Doolittle and Burrows. I'm the attorney for the applicant. And the applicant is Juicy SPOH LLC. The property owner is Courthouse Square Investment Group LLC, an affiliated entity.
And your address?
My address is 3800 Embassy Parkway, Suite 300, Fairlon 44333.
And if you could raise your hand, what you are about to say will be the truth.
Yes. I agree.
Okay.
I would like to introduce my client to speak.
Same thing, name and address.
Good evening. My name is Justin Carey, head of real estate for the applicant. My address is 301 Yamato Road, Suite 3250 Boca Raton, Florida 33431.
And you swear that what you're about to say will be the truth?
I do.
Very good. Go ahead.
Yeah, so we brought a presentation for you. It's many pages long. I'm happy to answer any questions, but in the interest of everyone's time, I'll give the very high-level summary of who we are and what we do and what we are ambitious to do here in Stowe. I work for a company called Juicy. Juicy is the parent company. You'll hear me use the term, the company Juicy. The company named Juicy interchangeably with the name Beyond Hello. So Beyond Hello is the brand name or the retail name for our dispensaries. And Juicy is the parent company above all of them. We have 42 compliant regulated dispensaries throughout the U.S. We operate in eight states in the regulated cannabis markets, including Ohio. We have a history of operating in Ohio. That's now going on four years. We have six dispensaries open in the state of Ohio currently. Seventh is due to open just before Christmas. And so if we're fortunate enough to, you know, obtain the approvals, we're looking for an ambitious for, you know, Stowe would be the eighth dispensary, which is the maximum allowed under the state regulations. So we're ambitious towards that. We have been working to identify real estate and an overall opportunity in Stowe for some time. We've digested and understood the current set of regulations and have made, you know, multiple attempts on properties and had discussions with landlords and property sellers throughout the city and have settled on the property that is, you know, part of this application for a number of reasons. At a high level, you know, why Summit County? Why Stowe? We look to, for this eighth store, you know, we look for markets that we believe are underserved. There are a number of dispensaries, I think close to 200 in the state right now. And a lot of them are heavily concentrated in Cincinnati, and Cleveland, and Columbus, and other large metropolitan areas. And then you have, you know, a number of dispensaries dispersed throughout the rest of the state and Summit County. But as we looked at Stowe as just a general marketplace, you know, there's a dense population, not only of just, you know, general citizens, but of cannabis customers and medical cannabis patients that live in Stowe, who currently don't have a local establishment to visit. They currently would need to drive to Kent, or to Cuyahoga, or Akron, or elsewhere. And so the high-level drive to find something in Stowe was primarily because of that. We can look at some data that tells us that this is an area where we believe, you know, the population of cannabis users would be pleased to have somewhere to go that's safe, that's accessible, that's, you know, convenient, and, you know, saves them however many minutes of traffic every week or month, depending on the type of customer or patient that they are. We settled on this property because we think it's, you know, checks a lot of the boxes that I just mentioned in terms of accessibility and safety and accessibility, sizing. We are often limited in terms of the types of landlords that have the capability to rent to us. We're not able to often lease space in large shopping centers because of deed restrictions or lease restrictions from their anchor tenants, or sometimes their banks have prohibitions against cannabis in spite of the fact that we're, you know, a legal and state-regulated and licensed and compliant organization. So the fact that this property was for sale was advantageous to our efforts. And so we were able to negotiate and do have the property under contract. The applicant, or the, you know, property owner is referenced as the current owner, but they are the seller, and we have the property under contract and hope to close on that property and construct what you saw in the renderings. Happy to discuss anything about our operations as pertains to the variances that we are seeking. You know, once we identified Stowe as a market that we would look to, you know, hopefully open in eventually. We are guided off, you know, by the state regulations in terms of setbacks, which all six of our other dispensaries are compliant with in terms of being 500 feet from schools, daycares, churches, places of worship, public parks, et cetera. So this property in, under discussion today, meets those requirements that the state regulator, the Department of, excuse me, the Division of Cannabis Control implies on us. And so, you know, we have confidence that the state regulator will look favorably upon this property because it meets those requirements, as well as the fact that it meets a need where there, you know, from the demographic perspective that I spoke to earlier. And so we are requesting a variance, you know, as relates to the current set of guidelines, which, you know, are challenging with respect to the residential zone. We, you know, and as Zach kind of pointed out, there's not really anywhere you can go in Stowe that would meet that, you know, requirement of being 1,000 feet from a residential zone, but for a few industrial areas, which, you know, we have not opened retail establishments in an industrial zone. Doesn't quite meet the standards that we, you know, require of ourselves in terms of safety, accessibility, et cetera. And so we are requesting variance there. And then as, you know, relates to the school daycare setback, you know, we are requesting a variance, given that, you know, the state guidelines will be met at the 500-foot measurement. Also, the state regulator measures from, excuse me, the exterior of the premises, not the property line. So if you look at our, where we intend to hopefully build, you know, a structure, that premises is in excess of 1,000 feet from the property line of the school in question. So it's a matter of 40 or 45 feet that we believe, in the long run, would be immaterial to the operations of our business, the safety of the constituents and citizens of Stowe, and respectfully request variance on both. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
So you mentioned that the actual building structure needs to be those distances, but it looks like in the map that you showed, you're actually going by the property line.
Correct.
So the building is going to be further away?
Correct.
By building, building to building?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, the exhibits that we produced for this presentation are measured based on the guidelines from the Stowe ordinance, property line to property line. But if we were to produce an exhibit that measured by means of the state requirements, we would measure from the building, and the distances would be slightly different.
And the residential district, though, that's not the case, correct?
It's correct. There's no getting around it that we abut the R1 zone, which puts us 1,000 feet off from the requirement. Like it's previously been discussed, there's not anywhere that you could buy, lease, or develop in the city limits that wouldn't have an issue of being 1,000 feet from a residential zone. You know, we feel that as far as residential zones go, these are fairly light in terms of the number of dwellings and, you know, the potential for, you know, neighborly interaction is low, although we welcome, you know, our neighbors to be, you know, a part of our organization and thus a part of their neighborhood. But nonetheless, yeah, and the zone that we directly abut actually doesn't have any dwellings on it. And I believe it would be, anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it would be challenging to develop a house or dwellings on the R1 that's directly abutting against this, just because of the water. But as, you know, given that you can't identify a property that doesn't have an R1 zone within 1,000 feet, we feel like this one has the least amount of challenges to it, given the circumstances.
And you're totally against industrial area?
We are. You know, we have a security team and a compliance team and a retail operations team that just doesn't, you know, it doesn't fit their requirements and criteria for operating, you know, a regulated business.
What is your proposed timeline for development for building?
So the floor plans and the renderings and the submissions that we brought to you today are still at early stage and I suppose subject to slight alteration, depend, of course, within the guidelines of code. And we have to go to council and, you know, go through some more steps here at the local level. So, you know, we predict that from the time that we receive the final approval on our use and can close on the property, nine months to develop the ground-up build project and hopefully cut a ribbon.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments they'd like to make? State your name and address, please.
Phil Herman, 677 East Steels Corners Road.
And do you swear that what you're about to say is the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. Thank you for your service, first of all. Thanks for hearing my comments tonight. As I share with you, I live at 677 East Steels Corners Road. That's the house that was pointed out as the closest residence there. My mother and I collectively own that 50 acres that you see there in the yellow. This is immediately west and north of this parcel that we're talking about here tonight. And, well, portions appear vacant, according to the description. That land is all our family home. It's where we raised our kids. It's where I was raised as a kid. It's the property where my brother lives in the third home here now. I'm here tonight to respectfully ask you to deny the variances requested for the adult-use cannabis dispensary proposed on that property. The last time I addressed this commission was during the rezoning of this parcel to C5, highway use or highway service. At that time, I shared concerns about the types of intense commercial uses that could be placed next to our home. But despite those concerns, I did take comfort knowing that the city had put clear protections in place, regulating the use of the property around it. Those parcels that you see is C5 there. And then I was especially glad to see ordinance 2024243 that was passed in Stowe in January. And that ordinance was adopted specifically to guide the placement of adult-use cannabis facilities and to shield the residential areas, the schools, the sensitive uses from incompatible adjacencies to residential. And so tonight, the applicant's asking the city to disregard those protections and to put the very first test of that ordinance to the test. So first, the applicant's requesting a zero-foot setback, as we know, from residential district, where the ordinance currently requires 1,000 feet. And that's not a minor variance, going from 1,000 feet to zero. It's a complete removal of an ordinance. To put this in context, as you know, my home is approximately 600 feet from the parcel. The nearest school bus stop is, that serves those children, is about 310 feet away from that parcel, right across the street there on the other side of the McDonald's. And we were described as the closest residence, but I believe the closest residence is in the Bridgewater Park Apartments that are approximately 450 feet from the parcel, inside the 500 feet that has been referenced as a proposed ordinance or a proposed change. Granted, a full waiver of the 1,000-foot residential buffer would effectively place the dispensary inside of what is our established neighborhood. It's where we live, whether or not C5 is considered residential or not. Second, the applicant seeks to reduce the 1,000-foot school setback to 950 feet. Council chose 1,000-foot buffer, double the state requirement, because Stowe wanted stronger protections for schools. If 950 feet were adequate or the desired, I think council would have written that into the ordinance. They didn't. They wrote 1,000. Third, granting variances of this magnitude would set an interesting precedent in Stowe. If the variances are granted, future applicants will understandably argue that the residential and school setbacks in that ordinance are flexible, they're negotiable, they're optional. I don't think that's how they were intended, certainly not eliminating them from 1,000 feet to zero feet. I feel like the commission has an important responsibility tonight. And let me make it clear, whether or not one supports adult-use cannabis is not the issue. The issue is whether Planning Commission would approve the elimination of an ordinance from 1,000 feet to zero feet where abuts residential, and that's a concern. Stowe does have multiple commercial and industrial areas where a dispensary could operate. While it's not ideal for the dispensary, it's also not ideal for our families to have it that close to where we live. For these reasons, I respectfully ask the commission to uphold the intent and the original intent or integrity of the ordinance that was passed just this year in January. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else care to make comments?
Hi, Hannah Mink, 200 Euclid Ave. I swear I'm about to tell the truth.
Okay.
So I just wanted to reiterate that what Zach had talked about earlier and what we had also presented is that the 1,000 variance is just, all right, the 1,000-foot variance for the schools is actually 500 feet at state law. And so when they're proposing that for the revision, it's to mirror the state law. So the state of Ohio has determined that 500 feet is sufficient protection, not that Stowe has to follow that. They can, are free, of course, to make that more stringent if they choose, but the 500 feet is state law. And then at state law, there is no residential limitations either. So the proposal was to mirror state law and state requirements. And so that is what the state of Ohio has determined is necessary for cannabis dispensaries. And so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. Ian Jones, 907 Fairlon Corporate Parkway. I do swear to tell the truth.
Pretty good.
So I work for Avid Architects, and we are, who put together the vicinity map for the application. And so, yeah, I can speak to, we also did a similar test that Zach had shown, where, you know, trying to find an applicable parcel within the city. And, yeah, just with the residential radius being 1,000, it pretty much shuts down everything, except for a few spots that, you know, couple that with only being permitted in C5, and then also the restrictions around, the 1,000-foot around schools and whatnot. There's really not a compliant spot in the city. So that, it kind of wipes out the possibility of, you know...
Well, there are compliant spots. You can't say there are no compliant spots in the city.
Well, yeah, I could go through the map in detail, I guess, but, yeah, generally, there's...
There's not many, I'll agree with that.
Yeah.
But there are compliant spots in the city.
Yeah, according to what I've put, what we put together, there's the location that is currently like a Dick's Sporting Goods store. And, you know, technically within, you know, if that were to be redeveloped, there would be a spot that you could put a dispensary. Or similar to Kohl's. And then there's a similar property with just a sliver that it seems like there's one possible greenfield spot that could fit a small area of that parcel. Now, would it be the highest and best use at that point? Probably not, but, but yeah, it's, it's a handful that basically makes it extremely challenging to find compliance within the city of Stowe. So, so yeah, yeah, yep. So just figured I'd kind of go over that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jamie, was there any input from the community? Okay. Motion?
The new code?
Again, the third reading is December 4th. I don't know, I will see if, if it gets approved that night or if it gets dragged on into next year. Right now, the legislation, we have it set to be effective February 9th.
And I will, I will just say that from my reading of the zoning code when I was putting together legislation after you guys approved it, this board has already removed the residential zoning requirement to the zoning code that is going before council now. So obviously, that is not in effect at this moment. But if it were to go into effect, that residential has been entirely removed. There's no 500-foot, there's no 150-foot. It's gone completely to match the state code.
But we are under the current law now, though, correct? So the application has to match the current law?
Correct.
Anyone care to make a motion?
Other than the, I assume, potential loss of revenue, what would that do to you to postpone and move into February? Where, application where we wouldn't have to deal with any of these variances?
Two answers to that question, excuse me. One, we don't own the property. We have it under contract. We have it under contract for a period of time that doesn't go forever and doesn't necessarily go until February. So could lose the property. Secondly, as the state regulations and the state licensing scheme is designed, there are only a certain number of state licenses that have been awarded. And not all of them have been cited and developed and opened as of yet. So the Summit County, so the, the state regulator has broken the state up into a number of different regions. I think it's A through maybe H. I think Summit County is its own region, Region G. And each region has a certain number of licenses and dispensaries that can be allowed within that region. And Summit County, because of the fact that there are certain number of dispensaries open in the county already, has one spot left. So we're aware that the code is potentially changing and up for discussion and third reading and what have you. So it sort of begs the question, well, can you just hang around and wait? And then, you know, you'll be compliant. The, the reason we decided to go for the variance is that last point that I made. We're not in control of our other licensed, you know, colleagues and competitors and what they're up to. So we wanted to, I don't want to say aggressively, but we wanted to put forth the variance request timely because if someone else were to open, get a license, take their license, go to the state and say, hey, I have a property, we want to put it here. And the state says, good for you, you're 500 feet from schools and daycares and et cetera, et cetera, you're, you're the license. Then, then there's, there's no chance for us to, to develop, you know, here, here in Stowe. So Akron Cannabis Dispensary, Adult Use Cannabis Dispensary is a permitted right in most, you know, certain commercial zones with no caps, no limits on how many you can put in Akron. Same thing with Cuyahoga Falls. There are already some dispensaries there in those two municipalities that I just mentioned. So, you know, hey, why don't you just find something in Akron? That's also not, not what we really would intend to do. But again, not, not knowing the inner workings of my, my other colleagues in the industry, the minute somebody opens a store that's by right in Cuyahoga Falls, even if you, you know, granted me the variance, if they beat me to the, to the state and put in the pin in the map and getting, you know, then, then, then even when you change your code, your ordinance in February, the opportunity to open in Stowe is now gone. So that, that's the reason we didn't just sit, sit back and wait and why we requested the variance now.
I know you mentioned, the gentleman mentioned about other locations to put this that wouldn't be necessarily as good as, or as favorable, I should say, to what you're looking at here. Where are those locations? Have you, when you were going through that process of determining other, other parcels to put, to build on?
Sorry. Like as it stands, I just meant to say that we made, you know, we have real estate brokers and, you know, a team that, that as I, you know, there are properties that are on the market on Kent Road and on Graham, you know, any number of reason. I mean, a property on Graham Road, you know, looks like it meets some of the setbacks, but not all of them. And, but it's also in the C3, so you'd have to rezone, you know, rezone the property. So, you know, I just, I mentioned that to say there are, you know, it's not to say that there are no properties, you know, in, in Stowe, but there's some degree of, of a denominator of saying, okay, well, they're literally all going to require a variance, you know, except but for up in, you know, the small sliver of an industrial zone. So, you know, this one, for all the reasons I mentioned, accessibility, safety, convenience, you know, the fact that it's for sale, that we can reasonably acquire it, all those reasons factor in. So we, there are, you know, we've made the calls. We've done the diligence and made the efforts to canvas Stowe. But it's not as if I have a 1B, you know, property. We have this one under contract.
Chris Niekamp again, on behalf of the applicant. The property is one of the least intrusive properties to residential. You currently have the buffer, with all due respect to the gentleman that spoke, the one parcel is a buffer and you have Steel's Corners across the street as a barrier to the daycare. It's actually, as far as location, you know, one of the most ideal locations for this, for this type of use and the least intrusive for residential in, in the city. And you have designated that you are going to allow one. And there's possibility that they won't get it if this is not approved. And so you, you have the tax income and other issues there as well as you're, I'm sure you're aware of. So I thought I'd add that.
Make a motion to approve application PC 25-31 as presented.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy?
Based on that we need to follow the current code as it is written now, I vote no.
Mr. Wagner?
No, it doesn't conform with current code.
Mrs. Chopto? Yes. Mr. Basic?
We've had a lot of this happen, a lot of variances we've, in, in cases that we've seen and we keep variating everything out. And I, while I agree, this is, I mean, I love the facility. It's a great-looking facility. You guys did a great job of filling it up. But I think at this point, because of those criteria not in place, I would have to say no.
Motion fails. All right, we're on to PC 2025-033.
All right, next application is PC 25-33. This property is at 4420 Kent Road. Property is 1.19 acres in Zone C4. This is for a conditional use for a drive-through facility, site plan for site modifications and a couple of variances. All right, so existing conditions, this property is currently vacant. This used to be a Kentucky Fried Chicken. I think this closed back in 2012. You guys might have a better history about that. Then turned into a Sleep Outfitters, which recently closed in the last year or two. So this would be a 717 credit union, which would reutilize the property in the building. The building itself is just over 3,800 square feet. Will contain 25 parking spaces. This property, or this use, they would reutilize the drive-through lane. So it was in operation during, during KFC and then they didn't use it during Sleep Outfitters. They do need a variance for the side setback. They are adding a small drive-through canopy on the east end of the property. Sticks out about seven feet from the building. So it'd be 13 feet, three inches from the, from the, from the side property line. Code requires 20. So they're requesting a variance of approximately seven feet. A couple of other modifications on the existing conditions. Probably notice this parking directly behind the building. They'll be taking those out, filling it in with landscaping. Turning these parking spaces into angled spaces. Adding a dumpster in the back, which will be fully screened with masonry surroundings. Landscaping, again, everything behind the building. This whole portion be fully landscaped. Few new trees, plenty of new shrubs. This has been approved by the city arborist. All the other landscaping that you see is existing on the site. Renderings, showing what it looks like currently and what the, what will look like if approved. And then, so drive-through facilities is conditional approval in the C4. We recently approved supplemental, supplemental regulations for drive-throughs, which basically states that they have to have a 10-foot bypass lane for any drive-through facility. That's intended so that there's emergency access around the bypass, around the drive-through lane in case it gets clogged up or if there's an emergency. So obviously, this has been, you know, pre-existing feature of the property. So they just want to reutilize it, open it back up for the drive-through. So, but they do need a variance since it was not used for, in the last 10 years. So with that, I'll leave this up. If you have any questions, the applicant is here, though. But happy to take any questions.
Is there any room for the bypass lane?
There is not, no.
All right.
My name is Matt Shanning. My address is 628 Nellis Portland Road, Warren, Ohio.
And you swear what you're about to say is the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Just kind of elaborate a little bit on the variances that we're requesting today. The first one being the setback from the side with the drive-through lane being what it is. And we're right against the property lines. We have no room to go. If we weren't there, it's existing condition, we definitely would abide by that. We could make a lane, it'd only be nine feet wide. If we'd have enough room for nine feet wide, which is enough to get a vehicle through. Some different jurisdictions have parking spaces that are nine feet wide. So you can move a car through, obviously not at a high rate of speed, but enough that you could safely pass the car if need be. Also, the canopy, the setback of encroaching on that 20-foot setback, the canopy is there to protect the equipment that's going to be in that wall as well as the person utilizing it. So if you're there and it's raining, I know we have beautiful weather here majority of the time. But, you know, so as you're sick and you're, as you're. So as you're utilizing that equipment, you know, you're not getting your arm wet and anything going in and out of that, of that machine, so.
So there is nine feet that you could do a bypass?
Yeah, we could do a nine feet on both of them, yeah. So as you're sitting at the ATM or the after-hour deposit, you would have a nine-foot lane for both. You can get around it and it could be striped as such.
Yes, but we, Planning Commission, they can make that condition of approval if that's what you guys want to do. Could require a nine-foot bypass lanes included on the site plan with a variance from Section 1145.15. So if, if that's what you guys decide on, I would just make sure.
It's a unique situation. The building's in existence. But it's a pretty important piece of legislation that was just passed.
Right.
So if there's a way we can do it, and if nine feet works, and I think it would for vehicles.
Yeah, so yeah, so if that's the case, I can let you guys discuss more. But just make sure you make that in your motion, refer to the code section.
Yep.
And we'll get that plan revised.
So in that, is that like an ATM or is it a person? Is it a, is somebody in there doing the transaction with the person at the, at the car?
So it's an ITM during the day and then after hours, it turns into an ATM.
So there's no person there?
Correct.
And there's no person at the remote ITM, right?
Correct.
I was looking at this and I was struggling with it as well. And it require you building something. That's the only problem is that putting a, one in the lane that you currently have there that's shown as the, you know, you have to actually have a building, you know, attached. And there's a lot of investment there, I know, to build something off of your current, the existing building into that lane that's on the south side where the picture, you know?
Yeah.
And, but that's the only other option that I thought about coming up with. But it sounds like if we got the room up there and we can make that part of the, the motion, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just didn't, you know, how much I wanted to get involved in. Because that does definitely have a bypass lane.
Right, that one does, absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience care to comment? Any other questions? I move we pass PC 2025-033 with the addendum that we make a variance on Section 1145.15 to include a nine-foot bypass lane. That works out?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I second that. We need to support Megan's way out.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Anything from the, I should have asked this before, anybody?
No.
Thank you. I'm sure you would have told me. All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Chopto?
Yes.
Mr. Basic?
Yes.
Motion carries. Anything else?
No, sir. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And motion for adjournment?
Motion to make adjournment?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a good Thanksgiving.